Good evening. Welcome to the Lewiston City Council meeting of Monday, February 10, 2014. I call this meeting to order. First order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me in stating the pledge. Please remove your caps.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, ungodly individual with liberty as its throne.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is citizen comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to address the council on agenda items or other items they wish to bring to the attention of council. Citizens are encouraged to discuss operational issues in advance with the city manager. In consideration of others wishing to speak, please limit your remarks to three minutes. I'm going to remind everybody, in case people want to get up and testify, we've closed the public hearing for the apartment complex, so we'll not be taking new testimony tonight. If somebody wants to speak in generalities, I suppose that would be permissible, but there will be no specific testimony given for the conditional use permit appeal for the apartment complex at this time. Are there any citizen comments? Please come down. Name an address for the record, please.
I hope I'm not getting out of line.
That's what I say. It was in your bounds. My name's Kirk Ross. I live at 932 Burl Avenue in Lewiston. And my comment, I think that we need to see, have some more affordable housing here in the valley. And we've got quite a few people that have, in my hearing, around the valley, that they've, they'd be in favor of some of this. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other citizen comments? Okay, seeing none. Before we get to the consent agenda, it's been brought to our attention that we probably should table a active agenda item, Resolution 2013-68, since there were some publishing or notification requirements that have not been met. Would you like to?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I would simply suggest that that item, and I can't remember if he originally tabled, just continued until today, simply be either retabled to the meeting, that next meeting, or if it was simply continued, then continued to that hearing.
Okay. Or just removed from the agenda, or what's the?
Well, once you do that, it'll come off the agenda for today. So, I would do that now, before anything else.
Table it?
Yeah. Just re, did we table it before?
Yes, it was tabled originally to this date. So, at this point, just a motion to table further consideration of it to the next council meeting on February 24th, which is the one that will allow us to meet the noticing requirements. That'd be sufficient.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah?
I move that we table item A on the active agenda until February 24th.
Okay. Got a motion? Do we have a second?
I second.
Okay. Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Anything else?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we add an executive session to the agenda per Idaho statute 6723451A.
So, is this another agenda item?
Is this an emergency?
No.
Okay. Then, I'm sorry, it doesn't meet the notice requirements for the Open Meeting Act. You'd have to set that for your next meeting. The only thing you can do at last minute, and to add something to the agenda or to change the agenda, is an emergency. Unless it's an emergency, then it wouldn't qualify to be added at this hour.
Yeah, otherwise it requires at least 24 hours' notice.
Right. We have to have 24 hours' notice.
We talked about having it on a few weeks ago, but if it's in violation, then I guess we can't add it.
I did, and I probably didn't follow through to the point. I know I talked to Mr. Bennett about it a little bit, but it wasn't on our work session agenda, so.
Okay, I'll withdraw my motion.
Sorry.
No, that's fine.
Maybe there was miscommunication.
And I'll take that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
On the consent agenda, I would like to move item B and item F to the active agenda.
Okay. Does anybody wish to move anything else from the consent agenda? We got a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to move items B, the bid award, and item F, Public Works records?
I would need a motion for just to move the, an item.
Yeah, we have to.
And they will now become item D and E on the active agenda. Any discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. We have a motion to read the consent agenda.
Removed?
As amended.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
The September 21st, 2014 Emergency Medical Services Advisory Board, January 8th, 2014 Planning and Zoning Commission, January 21st, 2014 Solid Waste Advisory Commission, and the September 24th, 2013 Urban Forestry Cemetery Commission. Approving Resolution 2014-1 by title only, a resolution pursuant to Idaho Code Section 672808 declaring the intent of the city council to award a sole source contract for computer hardware and software to Control System Technology Incorporated and providing an effective date. Approving Resolution 2014-3 by title only, a resolution accepting an easement from Seekins Precision LLC, an Idaho limited liability company, to the City of Lewiston and Idaho Municipal Corporation for public utilities with maintenance access and providing an effective date. Approving Resolution 2014-4 by title only, a resolution accepting and approving an easement and a dedication of right-of-way from Dwayne F. Gage and providing an effective date. Approving the joint power subscriber agreement between the city and Idaho County's risk management program, and approving the vouchers payable for January 17th, 2014 through January 30th, 2014, in the amount of $755,644.36.
Counsel, the consent agenda's been read. Those in favor of approving, or a motion to approve?
Motion to approve consent.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Okay, on to the active agenda. And I guess item A has been removed until further notice, so we're on to active agenda item B, Lewiston Orchard Sewer District. So, approving an agreement between the city and Lewiston Orchard Sewer District. Mr. Bennett?
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. This is an agreement for a longstanding arrangement between the Lewiston Orchards Sanitary District and the City of Lewiston for providing maintenance and treatment of the affluent from their system. We've had an evergreen contract with LOSD for many, many years. The agreement actually expired some years ago, and we've been working on a year-to-year basis with them, working to put together a new contract between LOSD and the city. So, that's what you have for you tonight, is a 10-year contract with the option for a five-year renewal that sets out the terms and conditions under which the city will continue to provide services to LOSD based on a flow formula that takes into account the true cost of all of the city's costs for providing that service to LOSD.
Okay. Thank you. Councillors? We have a motion to approve, or?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? I've just got a little bit, since, living in the district, Mr. Bennett was being generous in his assessment of, it's been some time. It's been over seven years since we had an active contract. And I know they've, both parties have been working towards an equitable resolution. And when we had the event out at the wastewater treatment plant, what, four years ago, I think it was? Three or four years ago? Just a building blew up. It was no big deal. But we had to replace a good portion of the structure, and at that time we were able to get some money to upgrade the plant at the same time, and LOSD kicked in a considerable sum of their treasury towards that upgrade to help cover some of their costs. So, I think this is a good, good agreement, and appreciate a vote and acceptance. So, that being said, any other comments?
One of the other things that was brought up during our work, last work session, was also there's probably some charges that they are going to include in this contract that wasn't in the original contract. So, we have some additional charges there.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Okay. Our next item is Appeal, AP 01-13, which was tabled from the 12714 council meeting. This is an appeal of the Planning and Zoning Commission decision to approve a conditional use permit to allow multifamily residential development in the R2 zoning district in approximately 10 acres, approximately 10 acres land located on the west side of 17th Street, north side of Stewart Avenue, and the south side of Vineyard Drive. There's the conditional use CU 07-13. Do we have a motion to approve? Denied?
So moved.
Start the discussion. Have a motion? Do you have a second?
Sure. I'm, well, I'm curious, what was the motion?
I move to approve.
Where were we?
To approve the conditional use permit, or to approve the appeal? I'm sorry.
Be denied the appeal, wouldn't it? To uphold the staff decision.
Okay.
That's to approve the conditional use permit.
Okay.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Counsel Randall?
I did some research on the internet, and I don't think this, approval of this conditional use will meet the requirement of Idaho Statute 676502, which states the purpose of land used planning is to protect the property rights while making accommodations for other necessary types of development, such as low-cost housing. It also doesn't go along with the city's comprehensive plan, which says a variety of housing types should be provided throughout the community while respecting the development plan of the neighborhood in which they are located. It also doesn't go along with the City Code 37-6, where the conditions imposed by any provision of this chapter are less restrictive than comparable conditions imposed by any other provision of this chapter, Chapter 37, which is zoning, and any other applicable regulation, the provision which is more restrictive, shall govern. Then also City Code 37160 says uses designated in this chapter as conditional uses may be permitted upon authorization by the commission in accordance with the standards and procedures established in this article. The commission may impose, in addition to those standards and requirements expressly specified by this chapter, any additional conditions which is considered necessary to protect the best interests of the surrounding property or the city as a whole. One of my biggest concerns is right off the bat, right in the very first part of the report by the P&amp;Z, they don't have a set established acreage. And in order to determine the number of units per acre, you have to have a set established usable lot area. That means anything that's excluded can't be built on. Okay? Now, in the City Code, usable land is defined so that it excludes wetlands and anything that's excessively steep. And there are City Codes that define those wetlands and defines the steep terrain. And on steep terrain, some of it can be modified, but it is dependent upon a suitability study whether they can do that. And nothing like that was mentioned at all in this P&amp;Z recommendation for the conditional use, which I believe also violates Idaho law. They're supposed to be very specific on why it should be accepted, and what, under what terms it should be accepted. The other thing is comprehensive plan says that there, I've heard some numbers bannered around anywhere from 15 to 11 units per acre. And the comprehensive plan for Lewiston in the West Orchard says density should be no more than eight units per acre. So, again, we have to have a determination of what is the usable acreage. Some people call it the buildable acreage, or the developmental acreage. But we have to know what, how much acreage can be used in order to determine the total number of units that can be built on that land. So, I don't think this P&amp;Z report that says that they're going to accept, they're going to accept the conditional use permit, I don't think it's appropriate. And myself, I'm going to vote it down, just because of that.
Counsel Randall, if I may, page one of the findings of fact and conclusions of law from planning and zoning, we do have staff calculations deduced that the buildable area, buildable area, not available, buildable, is approximately 9.4 acres. And I'm running some quick math here right now, and it puts it at about 12.2 units per acre. 12.3 is what I come up with. But, we do have Mr. Plaskin here, because I know there's several of us that have questions for him, since things were brought up at the last public hearing. And I appreciate your comments.
Okay.
Have you shared this with staff, though?
No, I haven't shared.
Mr. Plaskin?
And I'll remind the council, Mr. Plaskin is our city planner. He's here to assist us, not to abdicate for or against. He is here to assist us in any questions we have. This would be the very appropriate time and place for our questions.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd be happy to answer with questions I can. As Counselor Randall said, he'd not shared the information that he just presented to the council with staff, so I'm not prepared to respond to those in terms of right now. After he just listed them off, I'd be happy to answer those individually if I am asked. On the buildable area issue, to my knowledge, at least in the zoning code, it's not specified whether the buildable area to be qualified includes wetlands or steep slopes or easements or anything like that. And we've used the gross area of the property under private ownership for purposes of density calculations.
Okay.
So, the term in the, in the decision by the Planning and Zoning Commission that you just read does use the term "buildable," but again, it's not qualified in there what exactly that means by, by "buildable."
Counsel Randall?
Question. When you talk about units per acre, that acre, is that a acre that concludes the total acreage of the, of the land under consideration, or is that just for quote-unquote usable lot acreage?
It's, the way that we've used it has been gross land ownership by the applicant, by the private party. I think the reason for that is that, you know, what one person may consider buildable, another person may not. What might be considered buildable could be affected by financial capabilities of the property owner. While one person may be able to build on it because they can afford only to do so much to modify the ground, whereas another person could build on it because they have more economic means to do it. There are a lot of different reasons and factors involved in that, but we've always used the gross land area under private ownership by the applicant, exclusive, or inclusive of land that is encumbered by easements, as long as it's not dedicated right-of-way. And that's what we've used, is gross land ownership. I think maybe a discussion relative to that matter might be better focused on the overall issue of density, which is units per acre. The issue of how many units, or how many acres, you know, talking about each of those things individually might not be the best way to approach it. It may be more important to consider those things combined, which is units per acre. Thinking of it in those terms is, is more directly related to what the land use regulations are about. The comprehensive plan, land use designation for the property is high-density residential. It's explicitly stated in there, contemplated for in the vicinity of 18 units per acre. The zoning code specifies this type of development through the conditional use permit process up to 15.4 units per acre. The Planning and Zoning Commission put a condition of approval on the permit at 12.1 units per acre. Whatever the acreage of the property in question comes out to be, as a result of surveying that will need to be done, and the resulting number of dwelling units will just be a product of what the density limit is.
So, it may be less than 120 units?
That's true. I think the most important factor is, is the density, but that includes both the size of the property and the number of units. I would focus the attention on the density itself, and, because that's what the land use regulations are about, whatever number of units and whatever number of acres is involved are kind of a, they're related, but they're not, I don't think, the most important issue individually. While I'm up here, could I address a couple of issues?
Please.
The council received a lot of information on this project. Between the Planning and Zoning Commission record of testimony, and then the testimony you heard yourselves, probably close to four hours of testimony. The written information that was submitted on appeal was probably close to 200 pages. And I'm not going to go through all, point by point, all of that. And the vast majority of that had to do with reasoning and content of decision. What I'd like to focus attention on right now, while I have this opportunity, is more related to procedure. There were a couple of issues that caught my attention, and I think the council's attention, at the appeal. One of them had to do with notice, required public hearing notice. And I want to state that we did meet the notice requirements of the state statute for this project. There are two, two elements that were brought up. One was neighbor notification, the other was notice to the school district. And we have met the notice requirements regarding both those elements of public hearing notice. The other one had to do with the ability to modify or waive a development standard through the special use permit process. And from a procedural perspective, I want to state again that, that that is allowed by state statute to waive or modify a development standard through the special use permit process. So, I wanted to, I wanted to respond to those procedural aspects.
Counsel Daniel?
I may not want to go anywhere yet, but I, since we jumped right into this, I was going to mention that I did, I did, I think we all received a couple emails from a few different people, and I don't remember their names right off the bat, but I know our city attorney is aware of them, but they won't be a factor in my decision. In fact, I think, if I remember correctly, two of them were for, and I don't remember if there was a third one or not. I also ran into somebody at my workplace that came up to me and stated that they were in favor for it, and I told them I couldn't discuss it with them, and I encouraged them to come to the meeting if they wanted to hear more. So, that's my disclosure.
And I will say that I received three emails, which I did not respond to. In fact, erased them from my cell phone, so.
I want to disclose that I believe Counselor Daniel, and I think Counselor Kleberg was there too. We were at Merriweathers, and I think somebody came up and was talking, and we both, we knew that they were bringing up the subject, so we turned away and didn't listen. So, the other thing is that my TAC meeting, it was brought up, but there was no details really brought up about it. It was just brought up in passing, so it won't affect my decision.
I also received two emails. It will not affect my decision.
Jamie's aware that I had received two emails, and I also had a brief conversation, which mainly just revolved around the history leading up to this event.
I'm assuming you received something too?
I don't know if I mentioned, but I received the emails as well.
No, I'm sorry. I apologize for not getting that on the table first thing. What about one of the biggest things, Mr. Plaskin, was the traffic mitigation. And traffic mitigation, any solution to infrastructure that'll be, the cost will be borne by developer?
Certainly. My solution is to call Assistant City Engineer Sean Stubbers.
And he can take us through this process, because, you know, that is a concern, I've not blown anybody's concerns off. I mean, you know, certainly if you're going to put that many units in there, but there are procedures in place. And granted, there was a traffic study done, that they were using data that was old. All that's changed. They will have to comply with today's real-time data, things like that, so. Yeah, we talked about that. Sean will address it. Mr. Stubbers?
Mr. Mayor, city council members? So, the typical process for something like this is in the preliminary stage, which is where the applicant is at. They provide some preliminary numbers that just give us a broad scale of the number of vehicles and/or pedestrians that be generated from the development. Once it goes through, whether it's a zoning action or, or that type of approval, once they move into the actual building permit stage of this, where we actually have an idea of the number of units, they will go into a traffic impact analysis. The client has already begun working with a traffic engineer. We have a defined guideline that's on the city's website that says what is required in that study. So, they will go through existing vehicles on all the streets, additional trips generated, and the potential impacts to the surrounding intersections. Now, what, you know, a traffic impact will do is identify that proportionate impact to those surrounding intersections, and if it does or does not trigger to those surrounding intersections, and if it does or does not trigger any needed improvements. And again, proportionate. So, if there's additional impacts to the intersection, and say you need a new signal and it costs $300,000, well, if their trips added to that intersection are 10%, they're only responsible of 10% of 300,000, if that makes sense. The other thing that was talked about a lot was, well, if this goes in, they're going to need to improve all the streets at a distance away from the intersection. That is not typical, not impossible, but not typical of a traffic impact analysis, that something like that would come out and say that they need to widen the street for four blocks, five blocks, that type of thing. It is typical that they improve all their frontages adjacent to their development, but just wanted to clarify those points. Does that make sense?
Sort of.
Okay. Questions?
So, if there's roughly 28 feet of pavement, then we have a 60-foot right-of-way up there for Stewart. They are or are not responsible for widening the street to accommodate, say, an extra turning lane.
Okay. And let me back up one step, too. During that public hearing, there was a lot of question about that item in there, about 50-foot right-of-way. The right-of-way there is actually 60, so it's wider than required. And I think there was some confusion that on a 60-foot right-of-way, you're not going to have a 60-foot wide street. That is the width needed for utilities, sidewalk, green space, curb and gutter, and then the street inside of that. A typical residential street would have less than, you know, 40 feet of cross-section. So, I just wanted to clarify that. But, so, those improvements that they would typically be required to do would be all of those streets that don't have the proper street width or curb and gutter and sidewalk directly adjacent to their property they're developing. It is possible that in, through that TIA, Traffic Impact Analysis process, that maybe a narrow section of a roadway is considered, you know, dangerous or it won't handle the additional traffic, and that has to be widened, but that is not typical of a traffic impact analysis. Does that make sense?
Sure. Other questions from Mr. Stubers? Counsel Daniel?
Well, it's probably not for, it's probably for Joel, but one of the people presenting last time had mentioned not reaching out to the school district. Would that be a question for you, I'm assuming?
Sure.
Can you respond to that?
There are two sections of the Local Land Use Planning Act, I believe, that are relevant. We took another look at them. Matter of fact, we talked about it again today, the staff level. One of the sections of the statute says that you have to explicitly notify, I can't remember the term that's used, but it uses a kind of a catch-all term for different governmental entities, but then it explicitly lists school districts. That section of the state code is applicable to when local jurisdictions adopt ordinances that specify that uses may be allowed by conditional use permit. So, when you put it in your code that you're going to allow certain uses in certain zones by conditional use permit, when you adopt that ordinance into your code, you have to notify the school district. Okay? That's a legislative matter. The other applicable section has to do with notice requirements for individual conditional use permit applications, quasi-judicial matters. I don't know why, can't explain the reasoning behind it, but that section of the state statute does not say that school districts have to be notified for the individual land use permit applications. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Blakely. For Counsel Blakely, sir.
Call me anything you want. It's not late for dinner. My question has to do with a definition, it was being talked about that in the comprehensive plan, it talked about multi-family housing. And I went home and pulled out the Webster's dictionary and looked up terminology, multi-family housing, and the definition I read can include anything from two families living next to each other to a very large apartment complex, undefined number. And I take that as probably that would be the definition that was being used in the comprehensive plan when multi-family, when we're referring to multi-family, not something, I took it as, in the testimony, that multi-family meant something smaller than the actual complex being built.
Joel, I think he's referring to 37-163. Addresses duplexes and triplexes.
That sounds like the section that has to do with conditional uses?
Well, it was, multi-family was specifically addressed in there. I'm just, these are notes that I'd taken down from.
Yeah. The terms used at different levels, in the comprehensive plan, at that level, there are no definitions in the comprehensive plan, so it uses the term relatively. However, the zoning code is the primary tool by which the plan is implemented. The zoning code does have a definition of multi-family. And I can't quote it off the top of my head, but I can tell you, for example, it does include two detached, single-family homes on one lot falls under the term multi-family residential development. The other aspect of it has to do with the number of attached units that are involved, and I can't remember if it's three or more, I want to say it's three or more units that are attached on the same lot, that qualifies as multi-family. And then the other element of it is more than one detached, single-family also qualifies as multi-family. I see no way that this project does not qualify as a multi-family project. I see no way that this project is not proposing a use that is allowable by the conditional use permit process. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council. For the purposes of your deliberations, you need to use the multi-family definition that's in the zoning code that Joel has referred to.
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel Randall.
Could I ask the city attorney to get on her computer and find the city website and also get the city code, or I mean, the comprehensive plan pulled up on her computer?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I have the city code pulled up. Let me give you my legal opinion regarding your deliberations for a conditional use permit. The comprehensive plan is not a standard by which you judge a conditional use permit. As Joel stated, in this case, comprehensive plan already says this is a multi-family area. But, the conditional use, and the reason you don't judge it against what's in the comprehensive plan is, a conditional use is allocated in this zoning area. In order to do that, it already has to comply with the comprehensive plan. The only time that the council should consider the comprehensive plan in a land use decision is a zoning decision, and the modification of a zone, a new zone, or zoning map determination, because in that case, the zone directly relates to what's in the comprehensive plan. And the comprehensive plan is not like the code. Comprehensive plan is like a blueprint. It's an idea of what has been adopted by the city that we want the city to look like. But, it's not something that you have, that, like a conditional use or variance where the code says you have to do this, this, and this. It's an idea of what we think the city should look like. But, because a conditional use has already been, this is a conditional use that's allowed in this particular zone, comprehensive plan has already been addressed. It's in the comprehensive plan, or it wouldn't be a conditional use, it just couldn't be in there as that. So, that's my legal opinion. Joel and I have a slight disagreement about that, but, and I think, I've talked to a number of other municipal attorneys, and I think that's a consistent opinion of municipal attorneys, is that you don't need to consider whether or not it's in conformity with the comprehensive plan because it already is, or it wouldn't be in this particular zone. So, you do have a set of standards that were laid out by Joel in his staff report, and please remember, and I tell you this every time we do this, I need to know what your reasoning is, and you need to look at those standards and make sure that if you're going to approve it, it complies with the standards that are laid out. If you're going to disapprove it, specifically what standards does it not meet? That are your reasons for disapproving it. I mean, there's new legislation that was passed last year that says you have to give very specific reasons, and you have to show how it met the standards, didn't meet the standards. So, it's even more important now than before for you to give your reasons behind a motion, if whoever makes the motion to either approve or not approve, when you vote, please give us the reasons, so it becomes a part of the record, and there are standards, as I said, laid out.
Counsel Daniel.
I guess I'll go on record first, then saying what my reasons are. My reasons are that pursuant to the reason statement by the P and Z.
Their findings of fact and conclusions of law.
So, you would be adopting the reasoning set forth in the findings of fact and conclusions of law?
Okay. And that's the rub. A lot of times, it's, you know, having dealt with a lot of these issues over the years, a motion comes into play a lot of times. And there's a reason for conditional use permits. There are uses outright in all the zones in town, and then there are uses that are allowed through the conditional use process. And that's what we have to decide. Did the Planning and Zoning Commission meet that burden through their findings and fact and conclusions of law, that this project actually has merits and complies with the rules and regulations of the city, I guess, so, for lack of a better term? Further discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel Randall.
I still think that the, I'd say this, the city planner is wrong. I think it's a low-density area, and I think we'd be violating state law by allowing it, because we're not taking into regard the neighborhood itself. And I understand his argument about the density, however, I don't think that's right either, because that's not using the tenet of the maximum or the most demanding of the statutes. But I think the low density would still, and I think the comprehensive plan still says it only eight units per acre, whether it's usable acres or total acres, it's still eight units per acre to figure that. And I don't think that the numbers that are used in the P and Z statement is correct, so I'll have to vote no on this.
Speaking from prior experience, in fact, it was a matter I wasn't even allowed to participate in because the project ended up going in right across the street from my house, but I think people familiar with Dr. Harry's old horse property up on Preston, 3.2 acres. He'd wanted to sell and move across the river. Sold it. The gentleman that bought it at the time came to the Planning and Zoning, and he was actually afforded the opportunity to build 24 single-family dwellings on 3.2 acres. 3.2. They did it through the planned use development conditions, if you will. Talking 3,500 to 3,600 square foot lots, some of them bigger, but the small ones were, they're small, little postage-stamped type cottage houses. You know, it didn't pan out. Of course, the housing market tanked, and he sold it to somebody else, and Mr. Young's done a fine job. I was just running some math there on that also, what would it be allowed on that 3.2? And I'm just using a rough estimate of, say, five houses per acre, maybe a little under five houses per acre, but he'd have been able to do 16, but because the planning unit development was in place, he was able to put 17 houses in there. And he's got some pretty decent-sized lots, but they're all substandard, minimum. City standard lot is 7,500 square feet. So, these things are allowed in town, where you, as far as the size of the development, this is, you know, again, going back to the P and Z and what they came up with, at the 9.4 buildable acres and what their density is, I, you know, I don't particularly have a problem with it. Is it the best place? Well, you know, that's, we could all debate that until the cows come home, but on the other hand, you know, we'll also get down to a thing that's called property rights. And I'm real careful when I bring this up, but I'm, I'm telling you right now, when somebody, when they buy a piece of property, they have a reasonable expectation of developing that property. And that's one of the rights we're afforded in the United States, of course, with conditions or under whatever zoning, you know, laws are in effect, things like that. The gentlemen have applied for a conditional use permit, Planning and Zoning held public hearings, we held a public hearing. I don't see where the conditions that have been applied on this project would necessarily keep anybody from enjoying their house. It allows them to develop something that is needed in the community. They're responsible for whatever traffic improvements may be required down the road, frontage improvements. So, that's, that's it, you know. There was a lot of emotional testimony that was given to us, too, and I know they had the same thing at the P and Z and stuff, and, you know, people are concerned about views and stuff. You know, unfortunately, the way it really is, is when you buy your house, I mean, the day you sign your papers, that's the only day you get to pick your neighbors. You go down to the bank, you sign the papers, that's the day. That's when you get to pick your neighbors, because next week, that guy might sell, that guy might sell, those aren't your neighbors anymore. Now you've got new neighbors. You know, if you had a view, somebody wants to build a house, I mean, you could build a house, you could build a two-story house with a 12-12 roof right there on Stewart, and that house could be sticking up there 35, 36 feet, be higher than what these are going to be from the street level anyways, where they're planning on putting. So, unfortunately, it's just, it is the way it is. There is no guarantee, you're not guaranteed your view. You could build a little cottage and plant a couple of big sycamore trees, and they'll grow into 55, 60 feet within 25, 30 years. Well, it's certainly going to cut into your view, but it is what it is. I mean, that's, if you want your view, I hate to say it, but, you know, it's one of those, you've got to buy it. I couldn't afford to buy the horse pasture across the street, and I wouldn't know how to raise a horse anyways. It was a beautiful pasture, now it's got houses on it. It is what it is. It hasn't really affected my neighborhood. Certainly hasn't affected my home values. I don't have a view to the south anyways, because I'm looking to the south up a hill. So, my view's to the north. You know, I'm not, and I'm trying to diminish anybody's, you know, passion or view on this project, it's just, these are the cards we're dealt with as a council. You know, we have to go with what's been presented to us. We've had public testimony, we've had two public hearings, and we have the findings and fact and conclusions of law at some length from the Planning and Zoning Commission, and I don't know that I can particularly find fault with what they came up with, so that's where I'm at. Further discussion? Well?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes?
Call for the question.
Call for the question. All right. Those in favor of upholding the Planning and Zoning's findings and fact and conclusions of law?
The call of the question requires that you vote on whether or not to stop debate. Requires two-thirds majority and a second, and it's not debatable. Once a question's called, you have to decide whether to stop debate first.
Okay. Call for the question in a second. So, where are we at now?
We vote on...
You're taking a vote on whether or not to stop debate.
Okay. Those in favor of stopping debate?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries seven to zero.
Now you go directly to the motion.
Thank you. So, the motion on the table is to approve the conditional use 07-13 based on the Planning and Zoning Commission's findings and fact and conclusions of law. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries six to one. Counsel Randall, boni nay. Okay. Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries six to one. Counsel Randall, boni ne. Okay. Thank you. All right. Next item on the agenda is the bid award for joint-use sanitary sewer.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to invite the Works Director, Chris Davies, up to the podium to describe the project for you and the bid process. This was for the sanitary sewer project, which is proposed to be constructed in the area of the city's community park to serve that general area there off of Warner.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Thank you, City Manager. This project is for award of a bid to construct a sanitary sewer line, which is in the community park, which is a joint project with the city of Lewiston, the school district, and the Lewiston-Clark State College. Funding for this project comes from a grant from EPA and currently through the city wastewater system. It is a 60-40 match, so 60% of it is a grant to a maximum amount of $328,000 from EPA, and the other 40% is, as I mentioned, is through the city's wastewater system. That has been budgeted, we have, excuse me, $350,000 in the wastewater system budget to cover for this project. The bids range anywhere from a low of $366,000 to a high of $704,000. We are recommending that the low bidder be awarded it at basically $366,000. This is really for the installation of the sewer for the entire project, for their main line, roughly 6,700 feet of main line. And I am, any other questions, I'd be glad to ask.
Okay.
Or answer, sorry.
Any questions for Mr. Davies?
Just one, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
The 360...
Counsel Blakely.
The $366,120.29, is that being, for lack of a better terminology, footed 100% by the city? And I know we had a presentation last week, and I'm asking the question because I should have been asking it. Or is there other organizations footing part of the bill at this point in time?
Actually, it'll be a 60-40% split. The city will actually have to pay the money upfront, and then we'll submit it to the federal, to the government. We'll get reimbursed back 60%. So the remaining 40%, which is, I have it here somewhere on my notes, $146,000, will be funded out of the sewer fund. And then we will get reimbursed through the other, through Lewiston-Clark State College and the school district.
So they, they have some ownership in this, then?
They do.
And that ownership will happen within a certain period of time?
At that point, that has not been determined. I would have to turn that over to Tim Barker when that specifically would happen. But there is a, the knowledge I have of it is that there is a general agreement when projects are done on that site, there is a mechanism to recover fees for whoever does that improvement. That's a benefit to everyone. That's my understanding.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I can tell you that we have kind of ongoing negotiations right now with the other two entities regarding a reimbursement agreement because there was never a specific reimbursement agreement for any projects that were done there.
And how do we get...
That's ongoing.
How do we get into these agreements?
Before my time, sorry. Wish I could answer that. I don't know.
However, we can say that in the past, when it comes to other improvements that have been constructed in that area, there has been cost sharing where the city has received reimbursements from those agencies, even though there isn't a specific agreement in place right now.
Okay.
May I take that question a little bit further?
Certainly.
So at this point in time, there's an undecided issue about cost sharing, possibly, possibly yes, possibly no, there'll be some reimbursement. I understand, I think I understand that, is what you're saying. Then later on, is there also potential hookup fees then by those agencies? Or are they paying that hookup fee upfront right now, hopefully getting it out of them now? And then down the road, if the school was to build there, would there be an additional charge for them to hook up to the sewer or not? Or is that being waived at this point in time?
There is no waiver of any of those fees. So when and if the school district were to build the school and hook up to it, they would pay the appropriate fee for the wastewater plant, any other connections, any appropriate fee at the time when they make that connection. If it's 10 years, I mean, we couldn't tell you what that fee would be because typically those fees are adjusted based on inflation and what happens with the plant. We look at it from the standpoint, we, basically, we have what we call is an equity buy-in fee, and we recalculate those every year. And those change, they, they can go up and they can go down. It's just based on the value of our plant and the ability to provide future sewer for out 20 years.
And do we know if that's made, been cleared to the other two organizations?
It is very clear. They, there is no waiver of those fees. When they come in and make a connection to the city, they, they will be paying those fees. Well, unless council waives it at that time. But I'm not even sure they can do that since it's in code.
That would be up to the City Council and what agreement that the city might approve between the city and the other agencies.
And down the road, say, if somebody chooses to buy the property to the north outside of that area, they would be able to hook up and pay buy-in fees to that sewer line also?
Anybody who connects to any existing sewer line pays those fees.
Yeah. But there's enough capacity there that somebody could build houses and tie into that eight-inch line?
That is correct.
Okay. Counselor Daniel.
Is the primary purpose for this project the community park from our perspective?
Well, that's a good question. I guess I would frame it in this way. We have a grant from the EPA for 60% of the cost of installing a sewer line. Whether that line serves a school district, the community park, or whether it just serves that area, to me, that's a good deal, that's 60 cents on the dollar, that we as citizens don't have to pay at some future date. Is it benefiting the community park? Yes, most certainly. Is it benefiting the other properties? Yes.
I guess I would also add that we will have no development of community park without a sewer line.
That is true.
We can't just drill holes in the ground and put one hole or zone. Those days are gone. Counselor Daniel.
I agree. I just wanted to, the only reason for asking the question was I just wanted to make sure we were doing this project from the city of Lewiston's perspective, not from anybody else's. I wanted to make sure that we were putting, we were utilizing this grant for the right area for the right reasons, so. And it sounds like we are.
I would agree with that. I guess I also look at it from the standpoint that when it's all said and done, this becomes an asset to the city. It becomes part of the wastewater system for the city of Lewiston. And whether the school district, the city of Lewiston, or Lewiston-Clark State College follow through with any of their pre-plans or it gets sold off, it's still a benefit to the city because sooner or later, the land will be developed. Maybe not five years, 10 years, but it will be developed. And we'll be rest, you know, we'll have the ability, or we'll understand that we have sewer there. And I think that's one of the key things that council and I would say the city is looking for is to make sure that we do have a well-maintained sewer system.
And I would offer that we've all, I think, pretty much of us have been in agreement. I know from the task force on growth, that was the big thing, was the limiting factor in growth, especially out in the east orchards, is lack of sanitary sewer. And this is a, in my opinion, a perfect way of getting a sanitary sewer system put in there, and hopefully it gives us a little bit of a jumpstart on finding something done at community park, so. Counsel Blakely.
I just want to make, again, go back and make sure then, the city's share of this could end up being the whole $120,000 if both entities decided not to participate in any cost sharing at this time.
Well...
Worst-case scenario.
I'm not sure that would be the worst. In my opinion, the worst-case scenario would be that the city, if they couldn't form an agreement, that we would have, again, it would have to go back through legal and work through the city manager, but look for a reimbursement district. So that we have that $140,000 and say, those properties all sold off that are in joint ownership, then we would say, if you're going to hook to it, you're going to pay this additional cost so that we do have the ability to recapture it, whether there's any formal agreements or not.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, worst-case scenario, yes, we pay the entire amount.
But eventually we'd be able to recapture it.
To some degree, we can recapture with, with hookups, but...
Well, a portion.
We have no signed agreement between the other two entities and ourselves right now for any kind of cost sharing on this particular project.
Other comments?
Mr. Mayor, before we get to vote, I just want to be sure with the city attorney that has an employee of Lewis Clark State College, conflict of interest potentially in this matter with a vote for me.
Do you sign your check?
Do I sign my check?
Yeah.
I could.
On the back, I mean, no. You don't sign it on the front, though.
At this time, you would not have a conflict, Counsel Collins. However, if an agreement between the entities comes up, you may have to recuse yourself.
Okay. So I entertain a motion to approve the bid award for the joint-use sanitary sewer to Quality Contractors LLC, Dury, Idaho, in the amount of $366,120.29.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Further discussion? Questions? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you, Mr. Davies. And let's see, item E, Public Works Records.
The reason I asked for that was I noticed there was a lot of airport, airport-connected records such as a golf course, some pump stations, that kind of thing. And I was just wondering if they had approached the airport authority, if they wanted any of those records. And our city clerk let me know that they are making copies of those, and so they might be available for the airport.
Okay.
At their discretion.
Any other discussion? We have a motion to approve destruction of, I'm trying to find my...
So moved.
Second? Thank you.
I do have a question, though.
Got a motion, a second? Do we have any discussion?
Yes, we do.
Counsel Daniel.
Now, when these are destroyed, we all, do we make electronic copies? Are they scanned or are they just destroyed?
I understand that they are scanning the majority of those into a program, yeah.
So we're just destroying the paper copies?
That's correct.
Further discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Clarification on that. You said the majority, so some documents are permanently being destroyed and not being scanned?
Under our, we have public records, and some of them, after a certain amount of time, are allowed by code to be destroyed. So those that are not allowed to be destroyed at this time are being scanned and kept. We have an ordinance that, that outlines those destruction dates on certain items.
And this is consistent with the state of Idaho's record retention schedule, which dictates what kind of public documents need to be held for how long and at what point they can be destroyed.
And this is something I think we vote on about, typically about once every year, isn't it? Because there's certain records that have reached that timeframe.
One department or another is destroying records at some point, and, and we strictly comply with the state code for keeping records. There are some records that are historic that we can't destroy, but many of the records that, we keep them up to the statutory period of time, and then we destroy them down there.
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel Randall.
I know probably when we vote on this, I would like to maybe include that we ask the city manager to contact the airport manager and let him know we have some records that he might be interested in and let him peruse them.
Okay. Want to make that as an amendment or just...
Yeah, I'll make that as an amendment. That's an amendment. Motion to amend that manager contact the airport manager, ask him if he wants to peruse the airport records.
Okay.
And relate it.
You got a second? A motion and a second? Any other discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Amendment carries seven to zero. Do we have to vote on the original motion again?
Yeah.
And back to the original motion. We have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, that motion carries seven to zero. Okay, well, that concludes the active agenda. Down to unfinished and new business. City councilor comments? Do we have any councilor comments tonight?
We do have a urban renewal agency meeting tomorrow at noon, if you're free. A lot of topics to be discussed, a lot of projects to be looked at.
Okay. Mr. Mayor? Yes?
I'm not sure if this would go on item C or now, but the Lewiston Historic Preservation Commission has an opening, I believe. Kerry's posted some information on the city's website for those that might be interested, so.
It's due tomorrow, 2/11. Any other councilor comments? I just, you know, I have, I guess I have one. I think tonight, you know, after quite a few hours of testimony and public hearings and stuff on both sides, P and Z and the, and the council, personally, I feel we made a reasoned decision on the apartment complex. I think it is something that's needed in this town. And I appreciate, truly appreciate, everybody that took their time, whether it was at the P and Z level, the ones that came down here, the people that are watching tonight on TV, and the council for a good spirited discussion. You know, we've got, we had a lot to think about, and they're never easy because, you know, you always, you're still going to have an unhappy group and a happy group. It is what it is, and that's, that's what keeps the process going. But anyways, I want to thank everybody again for, for listening and putting in their testimony and their time and efforts, so. City manager comments?
Thank you, Mayor. Just to note that we will be having a special council work session on Saturday, February 22nd, at the Police Training Center on 16th. This will be our first budget strategy session of the year to look at what the council's priorities are for the budget for the coming year as we start working through that process. So it'll start at 8:00 a.m. at, again, the Police Training Center, and it will run for, through lunchtime, probably into the early afternoon, 1 o'clock, 2 o'clock. And this is similar to a session that we held last year, same location for that same purpose.
Would you like to address our meeting of this afternoon briefly?
Yes, this afternoon. Thanks for the reminder. We, the council, did meet in a special session to hear the city's audit report from our auditors, Presnel Gage, after it had been prepared by them along with the comprehensive annual financial report, which was reviewed by the city's audit committee. That was approved by the council this afternoon unanimously, so that, that's a good thing. It was an unqualified audit, meaning that there were, it was about as clean an audit as you could get. And I anticipate that the city will receive recognition again this year by the Government Accounting Standards Board for the preparation of that document, which will be about like the 23rd or 24th year in a row.
Well, good job. Okay. Okay. Advisory Board and Commission appointments, do we have any this evening, or?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
We still have two openings on the Solid Waste Commission.
And I think we have got a couple on the...
With the TAC, yeah. There's one opening on the TAC, there's two applicants.
So, we're going to try and arrange a time to interview?
Yeah, we'll start interviews soon.
And then Counselor Maldonado, we've got a few applicants for the Youth Advisory Commission you're going to meet with?
Yeah, we're going to, those, if you're watching or paying attention, the three applicants for the Youth Advisory Commission come to the meeting at 3:30 at the Community Center on Wednesday, and I'll get to know you, get to meet you, and then we'll go from there, and hopefully the next meeting appoints you.
Any others? Work session and agenda topics, we have any new discussion topics we want to bring up? What we have coming up in March? If you can refresh our memory. It seems like we're getting a little full.
Yeah.
Right, we're going to have, I know, an initial report on the Urban Renewal Agency and the process that they are going through right now in reviewing the urban renewal plan. We're also going to be talking about the council going paperless, and talking about the use of tablets and/or laptops for your meetings here at the city council level. We have a number of other issues, I'll make sure that we update you on those at the next meeting.
Perhaps you could...
That'll be on March...
Third.
Third, right.
Perhaps you could revisit the idea of recording and/or airing our work sessions from City Hall.
One other issue, I know Counselor Randall brought this up, and I had brought it up earlier, is for the council to take a look at whether or not you want to meet more frequently as well in work sessions, so we can tackle what seems to be a growing list of issues that the council would like to review.
Well, keep us apprised then, if we need to do that.
Will do.
Okay. Anything else? Well, with that, we'll call this meeting adjourned. Thank you, everybody.